We're a little bit late. Heidi, take your seat. Let's go. We're not running on your time. We're running on my time.
One hour on towing and 30 minutes on our next 75 years.
Welcome to the January 16th meeting. Actually, it's our first council meeting of the year. It's not our committee meeting. Would the court please read the roll?
Mr. Amrin.
Here.
Mr. DeLeon.
Here.
Mr. Farrar.
Here.
Mr. Kuhar. Ms. Rosenberg.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
And Ms. Wallach.
Here.
Okay, we have open remarks by Mr. DeLeon.
I have no remarks. Just stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need a motion for the regular council meeting minutes.
Where are the regular councils?
Nineteen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. I can't. I'm not going to approve the minutes. Heidi, do you want to do it?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second? Mike seconded it?
I can't second it. I wasn't here.
All right.
I'll second it.
John was here. He seconded. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. One abstention.
Two.
Two abstentions. Okay, thank you. Okay, communications, public communications. Who signed in here?
Christopher Myers.
All right, I got to read my remark here. While the law does not require a council to provide time for public comment, we have historically invited the public to make comment, and we appreciate their input. This is a time when residents and others can comment on matters that concern them. However, if we will, we will not engage in any debate. And as President of Council, I reserve the right to end any public comment that is disruptive, embarrassing, harassing, or otherwise objectable. We ask that when you come to the podium, that you speak into the mic, that you clearly state your name and address, and you are limited to three minutes. Mr. Myers.
My name, my name is Christopher Myers. I live at 220 East Dalem Street, Kent, Ohio. I would like to say that objectionable, Mr. Mayor, is in the ear of the be-hearer. I'm reading tonight, and stop me when my three minutes are up. This is entitled Kent Ordinance 521.15, Snow Removal. This is to Mr. Ruller. Well, Mr. Ruller, last evening, contrary to Kent City Ordinance 521.15, the snow was still there on the public sidewalk in front of the home of Councilperson Heidi Schaefer. I would like to be able to speak directly with Ms. Schaefer about this and other things, but I can't. As she and the city's bizarre police report against me stated that she has stopped responding to me, stating no specifics as to just why that is. She is supposed to be my councilperson, but alas, I guess she just considers me to be a non-person, and I must defend myself against her, rather to overuse a word, bizarre attack against me in that police report. I will work against her should she run for reelection. No, I will not run. These bones are 82 years old, and I served my time on council many years ago. But back to the snow on her walk. Is she ill? Is there a valid reason for her walk going unclear? The ordinance does not leave room for these questions. It is to slam-bam. The city service department is going to clear your walk and charge you. I think that is wrong, but that is the way it is written. If you're going to have it that way, you need to enforce it that way. There can be no favorites, and Mr. Ruller, you're saying you were sending the compliance officer out to advise her is contrary to how the ordinance is written. The problem, of course, is would you do that for everyone? Would you do it for me? Ha. Council is too quick to dictate thou shalt and thou shalt not, such as this in your trashcan elements. Were someone to report trashcans left out after 7:00 on trash day, would you, Mr. Ruller, send the compliance officer out to advise them? Were someone to report all the uncleared sidewalks, would you send him out to advise them? Would you do it for me? That's a joke, Mr. Ruller. With your turning me into the mayor, the law director, and the clerk of all people for betressing on the corner a southeast paster and haymaker, protesting you didn't even know what.
You've got no minute.
You have shown your bias against me. You even let Tom Euclid blow you off by not, by his not making his detailed report to you, as he was supposedly supposed to do based on your report to council, a copy of which I have. Doug Kubinsky in Kent State's Legal Affairs Office could find no such report, and you even told me Euclid never sent one. I question you remember being, I question you being a member of Kent State's Search Committee for a new president. I just don't think that you have shown the integrity or the courage for making a valid judgment call regarding such an important position.
You've got a half a minute, Chris.
On my street, we do a pretty good job of looking in on each other if something seems amiss. I take my neighbor's trash can in three years away, and I shovel his walk. My neighbors shovel my walk if they can and get, if they can get through it before I can. A trashcan left out screams that the person may not be home, and that is an invitation to someone with malice in his or her heart.
Are you going to wind it up? You're out of time.
Yes. I am glad I don't live on Heidi Street, who walk up to her porch has not been cleaned and her house is dark. I fear for her. Does anyone know if she is okay? I don't believe it is like her to go away and not make provision for having her walk kept clear. And there's much more, but you have a copy.
Does the court have a copy of that?
What's that?
Does the court have a copy?
The court has a copy. I have copies for everybody here if they'd like one.
All right. Thank you for your input. Further?
No, sir.
Written communication?
We have the health board agenda for January 8th. The statistical report and the minutes of December 11th, 2018, were received January 3rd. Sustainability Commission meeting agenda for January 7th and the minutes of December 4th were received on January 4th. And there was a letter received by me from the Board of Elections to verify the accuracy of their list of city officials, and that was received on January 9th. And then after the agenda was published, the Parks and Recreation Board packet for tomorrow was received on the 14th, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. City manager's report?
Yeah, I'd like to move items 1 through 13 on the city manager's report, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kuhar. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I don't think there's any more for Mr. Ruller, except keeping me your thoughts tomorrow. Standing committee, committee of the whole, there's no minutes, there's no action, but we do need a motion to repeal Resolution 2018-128. So I need a motion to repeal that. What, Tracy, you haven't?
What is it?
We, it had to do with the write-in candidate on the ballot that we don't put write-in candidates. And they didn't have five votes to begin with, and we appointed them to the council. We have to reset that.
Oh, okay.
All right, are you gonna, who's making the motion?
I moved it, but emergency.
Yeah, second by Jack. Any discussion on it? Any further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. With Court Read Draft Number 2019.
Draft Number 2019-1, a resolution repealing Resolution Number 2018-128 and appointing Jonah Burton and Dave Malle to the Board of Zoning Appeals and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
And Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on adoption? Hearing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-1 passes.
Okay, thank you. That's all for committee of the whole. All the other committees don't really have committee meetings or in progress. Terror, when will those be done?
They should be done before my last day.
All right. So that's the 25th?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Committee, committee development, Mr. Kuhar?
Well, I guess since I can't approve the minutes, I can make a motion to approve the actions.
That's what we need.
Separate action number four, please.
Okay. I move, I put it there. I move to approve actions 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I move to approve action number 4.
Second.
Who seconded it? All right, Tracy. All right. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And one abstention. All right, would the court read 2019-2 entitled only?
Draft Number 2019-2, an ordinance accepting for dedication purposes to the city of Kent, Ohio, the street right-of-way at 4263 New Comer Road and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
And Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2019-2 passes.
Okay, thank you. Would the Court Read Draft Number 2019-3 entitled only?
Draft Number 2019-3, a resolution authorizing the renewal of the city's Economic Development Agency revolving loan fund plan, EDA-RLF plan, as amended and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-3 passes.
Okay, thank you. Would the Court Read Draft Number 2019-4 entitled only?
Draft Number 2019-4, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to accept two easements at 1,005 East Main Street and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
And Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger. Any discussion on adoption? Glenn, you had your hand up?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was just.
You just dropped.
Dropped my arm out. Sorry.
There's a twitch. She has that twitch.
Please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
And Mr. Turner. Resolution 2019-4 passes.
Okay, would the Court Read Draft Number 2019-5 entitled only?
Draft Number 2019-5, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to grant a storm sewer easement to the Unitarian Universalist Church of Kent and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Should I abstain? Abstain.
Not from, you don't have to from suspension.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Please, any discussion on adoption? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Abstain.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
And Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-5 passes.
Okay, thank you. Would the Court Read Draft Number 2019-11 entitled only?
Draft Number 2019-11, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to accept a general purpose easement from West River Place and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
John, you seconded that?
Yeah.
All right. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
And Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Resolution 2019-11 passes.
Okay, thank you. Would the Court Read Draft Number 2019-12 entitled only?
Draft Number 2019-12, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to grant an access easement to West River Place and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll on adoption.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-12 passes.
Is there further, John?
No.
Finance committee, Mr. DeLeon, you weren't here.
I'm reading. You can do the act. I move the action recommended.
Second.
Any discussion on the action? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Would the Court Read Draft Number 2019-6 entitled only?
Draft Number 2019-6, a resolution adopting the city of Kent, Ohio credit debit purchasing card policy as approved by the city manager or his designee and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
John, seconded. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
And Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-6 passes.
Thank you. Would the Court Read Draft Number 2019-7 entitled only?
Draft Number 2019-7, a resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $1,500 to the city of Kent Parks and Recreation Department from Henry V. and Francis W. Christensen Foundation for the 2019 Kent Parks and Recreation Beautification Program to purchase annual flowers and trees in the parks and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Roger. Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
And Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger. Is there any discussion on adoption? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Resolution 2019-7 passes.
Thank you. Would the Court Read Draft Number 2019-13 entitled only?
Draft Number 2019-13, a resolution authorizing Kent's Park and Recreation to submit an application for a 2019 Clean Ohio Trail Fund Grant and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
And Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger. Is there discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.[1091.81]
Yes.
Resolution 2019-13 passes.
Okay, thank you. That's it for finance, health, and safety, Mr. Amerin?
Yes, I move the action recommended.
Second.
Any discussion on the action?
I want to move to amend.
I'll second. Oh, no.
Yeah, did you second it?
Did you second it? Yeah, okay.
Well...
You didn't hear it, didn't you? Why not? That's why I was...
Waiting for him to finish.
What is it?
John made the motion amend. Gwen, you're second, isn't it?
Yes.
John, give us your case.
We need a reason.
You can't do this?
No.
Well, he needs to state the reason he's amended.
Well...
I think I missed... Yeah, I think I jumped ahead of you.
You did. John, give us your...
I'd like to amend the motion to restore the ordinance the way that the chief had presented it first. And the reason that I'm... Do you want the reason now or during discussion? The reason that I'm doing that, I've done some research on local tow companies. And my findings were, the chief of police in Ravenna said that the average tow there is about $100 to start with. There's no mileage fee paid. City of Springfield and Magador charge $95 for their city tow, or their police toes. And if you would look at all the toes in the area, with the exception of Streetsboro, the average comes out to about $103 per tow, where our chief was right on. Now, none of the police toes in the surrounding municipalities are regulated. None of the police toes in the surrounding areas charge mileage for the police tow. So if you would look at our chief's recommendation of $100, which, you know, we put this on her to give us her expert opinion, and then you would add the mileage, which nobody else charges, you're looking at about $110. So our police toes are about 25 percent, pay about 25 percent more than a tow that is not a police tow. In my research, the toes that are not a police tow are averaged somewhere near $80 to $82, if you would average them out. There's some at 90, some at 70. Motoring club are all lower. And for that reason, I think we should, you know, I think we should rely on what our police chief gave us. And I think that's, you know, the guy that towed somebody for $85 was driving a state-of-the-art rig and happy about it and making money. Now, granted, you could go into some high-dollar communities where the rent's five times as much as it is here. And, you know, like someone mentioned Cleveland, you know, well, you can't expect to pay the same amount in Kent, Ohio as you do Cleveland. You pay, God knows, just to park in Cleveland. But this is in Cleveland, this is Kent, Ohio. And we want to be fair to our tow truck operators, but we also represent, you know, the citizens of Kent. And I know if my car just got rear-ended and I had to have a police tow, I wouldn't want to be punished even more, you know, by the time it gets on the back of the hook and goes somewhere. The $20 storage fees are pretty ordinary everywhere. Everybody charges about $20. I think there was one town that charged 25. So that's my reasoning.
You want to change the 125 back down to what?
Back to what the police chief...
The 90.
To 100.
What?
To 100 plus, still allow the mileage charge.
All right. Gwen, further discussion?
I'll get one on second. Yeah, I agree. I don't want to... It sounds like in most cases, these are accidents that are getting towed. I don't want it to appear to our residents as there's a punitive penalty for getting into an accident in Kent that is more expensive here than in other communities. That was my concern previously. I think that in light of what the surrounding communities are charging, I think that the research that our law director and the chief did was adequate at coming at that $100 total. I support that.
Tracy.
I'm not going to support the amendment because when the tow trucks are doing a city tow, a lot of times it's not an accident. A lot of times it's people parking in incorrect parking places. And they're taking a risk that those people are going to come and get their car. And a lot of times they don't come and get their car. So they're responsible then for disposing of the vehicle. And so I don't see any problem with charging a little extra for the towing like that.
Who else had their hand? Mike?
That's just, this is just for a police tow, correct?
Yes, just a police tow.
But a police tow off a private, they don't do police toes off a private property.
City property.
Off a city property, but not off a private property. Off a private property, a tow truck driver can charge whatever he wants.
Exactly.
No, that's not correct.
Well, within reason.
Yeah, the state of Ohio under ordinance 40-something mandates that no more than $229 be charged by a tow truck operator for trucks, for vehicles weighing up to 10,000 pounds.
I just wanted to differ, make sure that the two are separated like that. That's off city property and police toes. Okay.
Anybody else? Heidi?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So the mileage piece, was that with every tow?
Yes.
Yes, so that was added on with every tow?
On top of the 100.
Roger.
Well, I'd like to, for clarifying purposes, this still will include their ability to charge the extra money for a flatbed?
Yes.
And so the 105 could easily, what's it, $35 extra for the flatbed coming out, I think?
Plus tax.
Plus tax. So that would make it $140. Okay.
Any further discussion?
Heidi?
Yeah, I mean, I'm leaning towards John's amendment. And the reason is that I wish we could find some medium ground, but I think it's a really big jump.
That is medium ground. That's the average.
Yeah, the average for this area, including cities like Stowe and Cuyahoga Falls.
No, I didn't get...
That we could be like comparable.
You're having your discussion. Heidi's got the floor.
Yeah, well, I'm asking him a question, too. I need to get the information. So you didn't get comparable cities, just Ravenna, Magador?
Stowe, Ravenna, Magador, Springfield.
All right, let's get out of the committee meeting.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
One no? Okay, that passes. So we got a vote on the action as amended here, is that correct?
You can vote on it. We didn't even read the suspension in, so we can vote on it as amended.
All right. Did we vote on the action?
I didn't even, I didn't read it in at all.
Oh, all right. No, the action.
So the action, yeah, you're good there. I see it. The action, yes. We voted that. That was Jack and Garrett.
All right.
So...
Would the Court read draft number 2019-8 in title only?
Draft number 2019-8, an ordinance amending section 137.11 titled Motor Vehicle Towing and Declaring an Emergency.
Move suspension.
That says amended, right?
This is to suspend, just to, yeah, this is not as amended.
Okay.
Because we went backwards.
All right.
So...
That's my fault.
Okay.
Excuse me. Call the roll for suspension.
Okay. Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Okay, and now we can, this is to adopt it as amended by Mr. Kuhar because we should have come between now and...
No, and then...
Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
No.
What don't you understand, John?
We are adopting it as amended by you.
We're going to adopt it as amended, okay.
Is there any other discussion on adopting this as amended? Please call the roll for adoption.
I need the motion and second.
I'll move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Adopt it as amended.
Thank you. And second.
Who seconded it? Mike?
Okay.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
No.
No, we need roll call.
We got a roll call.
Roll call.
We're all messed up here.
Just a little. It's okay.
My fault.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
No.
Mr. Amerin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-8 as amended passes.
Thank you. Would the Court read draft number 2019-9 in title only?
Draft number 2019-9, an ordinance amending section 356.02 titled Impounding of Vehicles, Public Property, and Declaring an Emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike, please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike, any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-9 passes.
Okay, thank you. Nothing in lane use, streets or sidewalks. Mr. Sedoti?
Yes, I'd like to recommend the action listed to authorize the Parta City of Kent Bus Shelter Agreement with an emergency clause.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Abstain.
One abstention by Jack. Would the Court read draft number 2019-10 in title only?
Draft number 2019-10, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to enter into agreement with Portage Area Regional Transportation Authority, Parta, and the City of Kent to jointly install bus passenger shelters and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes. I'm sorry, I need to abstain.
It's only the suspension.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by Roger, any discussion on adopting this? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerin?
Yes. No, abstain, sorry. I'll get it right. Boy, we're having an...
All in it together.
I already marked it. Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
And Mr. Turner. And then we have resolution number 2019-10 passing.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Is there anything under special committee reports? Unfinished business, anybody?
No, not unfinished, no.
Under new business, item needing console action or referral, Tracy?
Yeah, I... Climate change is upon us right now. We can no longer put it off for 10 years, 5 years, whatever. So I would like to refer to the Sustainability Committee if they can go around the city and find out ways that we can now reduce our carbon footprint.
There's second to that?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Further discussion, Tracy?
Well, as I said, it's now. The time is now. It's no longer 15 years in the future, 20. We have to do, start doing things now to help with climate change, so that's why.
Heidi?
Yeah, I would add that, you know, we shouldn't just put this on our Sustainability Commission, but I understand that, you know, we would want their input. But I would also add that we would want our city staff and city manager, city manager to direct city staff to likewise look at some things that we can do to reduce our carbon footprint. But I agree with the recommendation to the Sustainability Commission and just ask that we expand that.
That's fine.
Further discussion? Gwen?
Do we have something now on like the Paris Accord?
Yes.
So is this, is this a similar or is this like a duplicate?
Links to it.
What's it?
Links to it. These are action state, yeah, we want some, we want action. And yeah, we asked them for that, but it doesn't hurt to, to, um...
Is it, or should we just bump that up, or would this be a redundancy of...
Well, I think with the, yeah, with the Paris Accord, you have to go through this whole thing. And this is just, what do we do now?
Is it different than two on the administration pending list, what you're asking?
They don't have that agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you could read that, number two.
The Sustainability Committee is trying to come up with the latest 10 actions that can be adopted for global warming, posting, same as with the media, I guess it doesn't. You're talking about carbon footprint. Is that different than what's there?
That's different than that.
It's about this here.
Pretty similar.
Well, these are actions for the public. I believe this one is things that we can put into the bulletin for actions for the public that they can do. I believe that's what that was.
All right. I just thought I said. Is there further discussion, John?
No discussion on that, no. I have, I have something.
We're in a motion right now.
No, nothing.
Oh. No more discussions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right, John, you're next.
I have two things. Number one, I'd like to make a motion to put in the committee that we look at operating our console like all the towns around us as a nonpartisan console.
That's the city charter.
Huh?
Is that not the charter?
Yes, it is.
You better go to the charter about that.
Yeah, if you go to the charter, okay.
Yeah.
How do you go to the charter?
Well, I think Charter Review Commission, I can't remember the year they came up.
We can put it on the ballot. Similar to what we did with Tracy's...
All right. Hope says we can do it by putting it on the ballot ourselves.
So it's a ballot issue, then? Okay. I'd just like to discuss it in, in committee. I'm not saying we want to do that, but everybody around us does that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Further discussion?
Yeah, there again, I think it opens up opportunity for our community. And to be frank with you, we were discussing it at the Board of Elections, and she was rather surprised with the forward-thinking community that we have that we haven't already done that because of the diversity in the city. And, and so instead of having a Democrat versus Republican and this and that, we go to nonpartisan and, you know, people that want to run, run for their wards and run for their, you know, their positions.
Garrett, further?
I've always said I don't think streets care if you're Republican or a Democrat. They just want to be plowed, and same with sidewalks. So it's, I don't think it, I don't think it, the local or the national issues amongst parties really matter amongst what we do for the city on a day-to-day basis. I think it makes sense.
Heidi?
I'm not going to support that, and I disagree respectfully. But I think that people need to have information about their candidates. And one piece of information is that which party they belong to. That gives some measure. People, we don't have that ability to do that with judges. And that leaves a significant amount of information out for people to decide on. You know, it's hard to evaluate a judge. I think it's hard to evaluate a candidate unless they have some additional piece of information. That's, that's it.
Let's not have a committee. Let's put in a committee or not, but I think... Robin?
Yeah, I, this has come up before. Question is, that limits my ability, would limit my ability to be partisan. There's already an instrument which you can exist for people who don't want to run as a Democrat or a Republican. Don't run as, in those kinds of situations, don't, don't choose a party. But my question would be exactly why I can't affiliate. I mean, my bottom line is that, that irrespective of what other communities are doing, I believe that partisan elections, as Heidi was saying, do have an impact. They do kind of let people know exactly what your belief system is. So I think it's pretty valuable. And I, and like I said before, I mean, you just don't have to vote. You don't have to vote for a Democrat or Republican. Nobody's forcing you to do that. Yes, it's a partisan act, but, you know, you have the ability not to do that. I think it's unfortunate if you force that on me. I like to affiliate. I like being a Democrat. I can understand Garrett and you. You guys are different party. You, as a matter of fact, don't even hold a party affiliation. But Garrett does. He's a Republican. I'm all for it.
All right.
Well, I'm... Mike?
I'm for talking about it in committee, but you can run nonpartisan and still be a Democrat.
Yep.
You can run nonpartisan and still be a Republican.
Exactly. We'll talk about it.
I was just going to make the comment, the irony of, you know, a progressive city and we, we, we supported and put forth the initiative for the LGBTQ community because we don't want to have people labeled and discriminated against because of how they label themselves. But yet, on the other hand, we're over here saying, well, you have to label yourself. You know, you have to be a Democrat or a Republican. And, you know, it's, it, you know, we can't even say his, her, or, or, you know, masculine or feminine pronouns anymore because people don't want to be gender identified that way. So it's, it's, I just can't help but know the irony of it. I think it's rather cynical, so...
Glenn?
I'm going to support it just because I think very often if you have, your two best candidates can possibly be from the same party, but one would have to be eliminated in a primary. So I'm going to support it and send it so that we can discuss it more for other potential outcomes like that.
Roger?
Yeah, I, I think the structure of our elections, they're usually over in the March primary. Why do we even have a general election? Because of the, of the way the structure is. I, I think we need to have this conversation. It's not, I'm not so sure where I stand on it, to be honest with you, but I think it's an important conversation to have.
Okay. John, last one.
Yeah, and rebuttal, you know, this isn't like a judge, judgeship where there's no information on a person's candidate. And as Gwen brought up, you know, maybe you have two good Republicans or two good Democrats or two good independents. You know, the newspaper's going to tell what they are. The only thing is, they'll be able to run against each other even if they're in the same party, and that's a plus. I've seen in the county a couple of issues where, yeah, good people want to be commissioners, but, you know, because it's a partisan county commissioner thing, they didn't have a chance. So now you could have, you could have two people and let the people hash it out on the voting.
All right. Call the question. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
No.
Put the hands up on the nose. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
Passes.
Five, four.
Four, five, four, passes.
Passes, five, four.
Yep.
Okay, and the other item that I had is I think I just want to have the administration look into this. And while doing all the research on the towing, I found that a lot of times the reason a lot of those cars sit in those storage yards is because the lien, the lien holders of those cars, by the time they find out about them being in the storage yards, it's three months. And they've already charged up storage bills more than cars are worth. So I don't know, you know, what's involved in notifying a lien holder. As I say, my son has a car lot, and he says, he says, he says it never happens. But, you know, by the time they're, they get the notice, they're into it so deep. So I don't know if there's a way, if we could look into it, how, how, within some type of original timeframe, a lien holder could be notified that something that they own is in storage. And so I just want to, you know...
That just a comment?
That's just, yeah, I just want...
All right, we're on, we're on action to referral. Robin?
Yeah, real quick, what did we just do with the partisan?
Put it into committee.